You're, are you, do you have, do you have it online? The black one. Wait, wait, wait. Huh? Go. Well, here we go.
Another black one.
Oh, here. That's clear on there.
Yeah, that's right.
Just on your head.
Yeah, not, not.
With the clicker. Oh, there you go. Okay. We'll be starting in just a minute.
Now, here you go.
Good afternoon. It is two o'clock and I shall call together the school board briefing meeting. First, we have a pretty full agenda. We have reports from all of our advisory committees, a couple policies to look over. Under academic services, the FSA results and preliminary budget briefing with Dr. Decimours. District property and growth briefing report, public comment, our comments, board attorneys, superintendents' comments, and go to the order. So with that, we shall begin with our board advisory council updates. And we'll begin with our district advisory council, Cindy Crosby. Thank you, Cindy.
Good afternoon, board members. Um, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. We've had two meetings since the last update. In April, we had a meeting, we had a presentation by Mark Moore, Gregory Blerton, and Don Huff about Triple M. They went over the timelines, the site selection matrix, advantages and disadvantages. Then DAC took a vote and we voted thirty-six for the Gateway site and twelve for the Alva site. We also selected two members from each zone in DAC to serve on the high school Triple M site selection committee. We also had, we had a busy evening that night. We also had a presentation about Lee County Standards of Excellence presented by Melissa Robbery, Brandy Macia, Rebecca Mendez, and Lizanne Thomas. They went over the instructional focus and support for the educators, the connections between the standards for excellence and the supporting standards, and sources and criteria used to identify the standards for excellence by grade level, and the development and support for teachers that is being implemented in the Lee County School District. In May, our meeting was led by Dr. Atkins. It was about the update of the district's Vision 2020 Plan. He talked about increasing student achievement, increasing retention of effective employees, different ways to do that, increasing family and community engagement. And we talked about how, he talked about how communication is a two-way street between the parent, the parenting community and the school district. And we, he talked about becoming a model continuous improvement organization and demonstrating to the taxpayers that the district is doing all it can, to make the best of use of their dollars and looking at ways to cut spending. And our next DAC meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September twentieth. Any questions?
Thank you, board members, any comments?
Ms. Morgan? Are we, what, do you have the numbers of parents versus teachers versus community members that are showing, actually showing up at DAC?
I do not have that.
You do not?
I don't know the breakdown of the DAC representatives by.
We do have a sign-in sheet, don't we?
Sign-in sheet, I would have to go back and check. I can get that information for you.
No, no, I was just curious to fall off the top of your head. You had some idea, because we did have a conversation about DAC yesterday in the workshop. And I was just thinking about how that membership is sorting out in terms of attendance, because for the last couple of years, the presentations have been terrific. So.
My feel is that it's more, it's, is becoming more parents and less educators just from, you know, being the chairperson and being up there and seeing how people react in questions that are being asked.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Patricca?
Kathleen, a move was made a year or two before I joined DAC to get more staff off of DAC and more family and community members onto DAC. And I'm only a year off of it, but when I was there, it was mostly community members.
Was it? Okay, good.
Ms. Labrevier?
And Ms. Rader has all the debt breakdown for that, so we can get that from her. But generally, it has been, since I've been on, it has been more parents in business.
Any other comments? Well, thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome.
And what will be your focus in the fall?
Good question. I, I'm not even sure, I, there's an election in October, so I may not be the chair anymore.
Okay.
I believe our first fall presentation. Remember the first fall? Okay. Is with curriculum. We plan to hear from curriculum first in the fall.
Okay.
And then go from there, but that could change. We need to have another executive DAC meeting before the fall agenda is set to firm up everything.
Mr. Toibert?
Thank you, Dr. Cockler. I also think this board, I think we also need to have that follow-up and discussion as Ms. Morgan was talking about, of our discussion as far as our board to help direct the, because I was going to get with, when I give the curriculum advisory committee the same thing. They're looking, I mean, they're going through what they like to hear and they're going through some, some standard information that they feel is important to bring back to the schools. But I think that if we gave them where our, where our minds are at and what our main focus is, and that's basically to get, you know, legislative action and how they can be part of that, you know, in the integral parts of that puzzle, I think that they may, you may move around your schedule to, to let us give some presentations from the board to that DAC to help us mobilize and do the things that we're, we're trying to get accomplished.
Definitely, I do know that's a strong thing with the board of getting all the advisory committees, especially DAC, more involved in the legislative part of everything.
That's a big group, so thank you for your leadership and we look forward to seeing you back in the fall.
Thank you.
Construction Advisory Committee, Molly Scott.
Good afternoon, everybody, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. So, in essence, we've had a busy year with the RFQ process selection and then, of course, Triple M. We had one meeting in April where the committee, we actually had one or two new members come on board at that point, and we did our scoring of the matrix. And then in May, we had a meeting and Mr. Blerton kind of gave us a synopsis of all of the committee's scores for each site, Alva and Gateway. And he went through every single score and for every single site. And it came to be that the construction advisory committee's site selection matrix scores showed Gateway, and I think nine to one is how the scores came about. So at that meeting, we decided to make a recommendation to the board that the Triple M site should be Gateway. And I believe that after our meeting in May, Mr. Blerton and I believe Mr. Mora went to other committees and got their, DAC was one of them, EDAC was another, got theirs, and then made a recommendation to you all based on all of that committee's information. And, let's see, I believe that was what we did in our May meeting. And we won't reconvene until September. At that point, a new chair will be voted upon. I don't know who that will be. Our meetings are typically the first Wednesday of the month, so the first Wednesday in September, we'll reconvene here in this building, is our new home. And I think that we talked, Greg and I talked about having more presentations come to us, whether that be from administration, from facilities, from the community partners, something, because we don't have a lot of, everybody has guest speakers and we don't have many. So we, we have publics come and be guests at our meetings, but we don't have many guest speakers. So I think that was one of the things that we had talked about, maybe allowing either us to kind of have some speakers to come in and talk about either what, what's going on, what the needs are, programming-wise, construction-wise, you know, those types of things, so.
That's it. Board members, Mr. Toibert?
Thank you, Molly, and I appreciate with the construction advisory committee what they've done for the, during our selection process with our new schools. Quite some time ago, I brought up LED lighting to Dr. Atkins, and I know it just got revisited by Ms. Morgan, by another vendor, and I'm not particularly vendor-specific, just the sense of the entity versus fluorescent halogen, you know, going to the LED with as much light usage as we have throughout the facility, you know, with parking lots and everything. Would that be something, would this board would want to task to get a thorough investigation with our power, you know, that has more, much more knowledge and authority than we do, task that, the viability to get a white paper on, is it, is it something that we should do either as a retrofit or as a, or as new, new construction, or both or neither? But let them give us the analysis, let them go through the vendor presentations, let them see the pros and cons, let them do all the research, what's out there, the price, you know, because the prices are going down, you know, you know, rapidly at some point, but we really need to have authorities and that's the group that I would like to do that work.
Board members, what are, what are your comments on that?
Well, I, I just wanted to ask Dr. Atkins, because I thought that one of the things that operations was looking at was efficiencies, no? Yes?
Yes, they are. They, they recently had released an RFP that was related to energy. It looked at two things. One, it looks at behavioral, you know, in terms of turn off the lights, that type of thing. And then the other piece looks at equipment, which should include the LED portion, I would imagine. I, I'll need to get some more details on that, but they just recently awarded that RFP and, and should be started pretty soon.
Oh, so we've got a third-party contractor doing that type of analysis?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay with that? Other comments, board members?
Well, I still think, I think it's a good idea to give them something like that. And I know that the community is always talking about solar and maybe solar is something that.
We also recently just had a meeting with FPNL regarding a solar program. So they're working with Mr. Law, Mr. Mora, examining our facilities for installation of solar farms. So that's an effort that's going on right now district-wide, so looking for tracts of land that have enough, you know, open space to where they can do this. Now, it's, it's not going to be a program that, that really is going to be significant savings to us, but it's more of an educational program and it adds to, you know, inner electricity that's added to their grid. So as I understand it, it's actually, I think, after it comes into our school building. So I, a little sketchy on the particulars right now, it's been a little bit, but, but they are working on that right now. It, it was a meeting I had with Florida Power and Light probably two weeks ago.
All right. Well, anyway, thank you. You did a great job this year. You had to deal with a lot of public and some sort of sticky issues, so good for you.
Well, that's why we serve, isn't it? And just to reiterate, the codes have changed also. So it's now becoming more and more a building code issue that you need to have certain lead type of situations. So there's a number of architects, construction engineers, people on our committee, so I think that might be something that, you know, our expertise might be helpful for.
Terrific.
Is there any other questions for me?
Any other questions, Ms. Labrevier?
Just a comment, I, I, with all the changes, and there have been recent changes with codes, and I think that would be very beneficial for a construction advisory committee to be fully aware of those and to help guide us, it'd be part of that advisement process for us as a district. So I'm glad that that's coming forward.
We'd be happy to do it.
And let me reiterate, I know I speak for all the board members and administration and everybody, all the research and time and visitations and discussion and all that you put into making that recommendation was phenomenal from our standpoint. So it, it, it made it work and we're very proud of the decision that was made based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. It was our pleasure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Continuous systemic improvement advisory committee, Mr. Rist.
Brian? It's not Brian Rist.
You don't look like Mr. Rist, Cindy.
It's just amazing what a little cosmetic surgery can do. Good afternoon, board members, and Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. Mr. Rist is not able to be here today, so I'm his stand-in today. The CSI advisory committee had three meetings during the fourth quarter. In the March meeting, April and Sarah Thompson talked to the committee about alternative to, alternatives to suspension strategies. And that generated a lot of discussion with the committee. And Mrs. Fisher was there at that meeting, was able to explain a little more fully some of the other options that are also available to, to the principals and clarify some of those things for the committee members. In the April meeting, we went back and reviewed topics that we had looked at throughout the year and brought forward some recommendations. Three of those recommendations were around the alternative to suspension ideas. And then the fourth one was around establishing a vehicle to capture three-hundred-and-sixty-degree feedback on leadership positions. In May, we had a meeting around Goal Two, increasing family and community engagement. And Mrs. Stillwell and Dr. Carlin presented an update on that area. And we had a very small group, so we did not set plans for the fall. But the people that were there did have a lot of questions around community engagement and they were able to elicit some feedback from them, so that was really good. Also during that meeting, we had an update on two recommendations that had gone forward to the board earlier. One of those, actually, one was around the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree feedback. And that was just an update from Dr. Pruitt that, that HR is looking into a method of providing that three-sixty-degree feedback. And then the other one was around developing a funding partnership arrangement to allow city police officers to serve as SROs. And we received information that the high schools had actually, our high school principals had been surveyed around that question and that they do prefer the sheriff's department, which is now in place. And then Dr. Atkins was able to provide a little more information on that at our chairperson's meeting last week or two weeks ago and discussed what a great partner the sheriff's department has been with us and, and discuss some of the limits that we'd had with the, with the city and municipality officers serving as SROs. So that is our update for fourth quarter.
Board members, comments?
Well, I just want to thank you, Cindy, for all of your support this year with that committee. And subsequent to the discussion regarding school resource officers coming from municipalities, I had a meeting with Captain Miller. And so he explained in depth and gave me some literature regarding the fact that the Lee County Sheriff's Office, school resource officers have intense training, ongoing training, and that there's a lot of collaboration and partnerships between them and the municipalities, so that they felt confident that it was a more cohesive working of that particular program and that the sister agencies were really okay with that at this point. So I think that discussion might be put to sleep, but great committee and wonderful input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, anybody else? Well, we please, please extend to Mr. Rist our appreciation for the leadership that he has given to this committee. And, I mean, continuous systemic improvement is our middle name. That's what we're all about, so your committee is really important to us. Thank you.
Just, I want to add a little bit of additional information on the SRO issue. We have met two or three different times with Chief Diggs. And that's what initiated, that's what caused us to initiate that survey of, of the different schools. And I think a piece around the results of that survey had the fact that those, a lot of those deputies had been in place at the middle school and the high school, so those relationships between students and staff had already been built up. We do, I do believe we want to continue to explore if there's possibilities to expand that relationship, but that is, you know, that's something that we want to talk through with both Sheriff Scott and also Chief Diggs. Whether it's, but in order to do that, I think what we would want to do is, is actually increase the number of SROs by, you know, one, two, something like that, so that we leave the sheriff deputies in place, don't decrease the number there, but potentially increase Fort Myers Police Department and place those maybe starting in, in elementary schools. But that is something ongoing and as we, as I, as we continue to meet with Chief Diggs, we'll, we'll keep you posted on, on that effort.
Mr. Toibert?
And I, and I'll just add in, thank you, Dr. Atkins. I do think it's important for the inner-city schools to have the city of Fort Myers presence there, to have that police force demonstrated there. But I also agree that the sheriff's department, they are simply amazing. I mean, if you watch, and I'm friends with many, many of our SROs over the years and the relationships they have with, with the students there and their, their efforts and attitude is just, I mean, it's, it's life-changing. And a lot of people in our, in our community don't understand why we have to spend the money to have police officers, you know, in our schools. And it's for a host of reasons. And it's, first off, it's not the way our schools were back when, when we were young. It's a different environment, and so there's a lot of different things that they do, not only for protection reasons, but also for, for, for social, social skills and interactions, they understand the role of, of the police. And there were surveys taken a lot of inner cities that what do you do when you see a police officer and the first answer with these children were, they run away, because they just don't know better. And that's not what you see in our schools, because they have faces and personalities and they have relationships with these police officers. And these men and women that serve in our schools are truly, truly amazing. And they're truly well-trained, not only in, in the interactions with students, but in, in teaching to be a role model. And to me, I can't say enough about that program, so.
Thank you. Other board members? Okay. Our, next is our curriculum advisory committee.
April couldn't be here today, so I'm going to fill in for her. So yes, I will give the, the brief report. And you can see all the reports were provided as backup material, so I'm not going to read from the material. But basically, in April, I started out with my board report and I spent a little bit longer, because I'm verbose, as you all know, more so, and I explained to them the whole charter situation and HB seventy-sixty-one, what was going on at the time and what we needed to do. And the response that I got from our school curriculum advisory committee was, you know, how do we get involved? How do we, what can, what can we do? And, and it was very, very sincere and very, you know, prevalent. And I think that's what we really need to make sure, that we, we harness that. So I, I explained to them where we're going at that point. Then Dr. Atkins came in and, and I didn't want to take too much away time from him, because you know how he's very short-winded as well. And he did his twenty-twenty, and he did an amazing job. And people were just spellbound, you know, in our curriculum advisory committee to see the overall vision of what we're trying to do with twenty-twenty as far as the, the vision and what we're doing as far as in taking place with our standards. And he went, and his PowerPoint presentation was very, was very in-depth and very comprehensive. And yet this group is, is a very, pretty strong-powered group as far as curriculum, coming from our universities and our, and a lot of people with education background and had a lot of very. education background, and had a lot of very good questions for Dr. Atkins, which he handled very adeptly, and they were very pleased. I believe that this 2020, and I know you give it to a lot of different groups, and we're continuing to get that out there, but I really think we really need to make sure that every opportunity we have to do that presentation, so people can actually hear the direction that we're going. I think it's very, very important. Then there was some good of the order for the social studies, you know, our social studies text adoption and the whole process of everybody who participated in that process. In our main meeting, we talked more about the Vision 2020, and I told them that, you know, and I gave them the update as far as that we're not stopping with, that our goal just doesn't stop for 2020, that it's a continuing vision as we move forward. And then Melissa Robery and Brandy Makiya brought in a presentation for the ELA Standards for Excellence for our ELA, and explained to how our state follows our state standards, and there's just so many things that are, you know, so multitude of standards, that it becomes very challenging for our teachers to cover everything to the in-depth requirements that we feel is necessary for our students to actually learn and embrace that particular core concept. So our Standards for Excellence are actually honing in on the critical components that we feel are necessary and making sure that that is taught with in-depth core competency, so that when they use that as a building block, every step moving forward, we don't have to reteach those concepts as we move forward. And we believe that that framework is what is going to make us world-class. And that's about it. And then they were talking about that math and science is currently being developed, and we'll get a presentation on that.
And thank you for being our liaison, Mr. Joe Ryder, Equity and University Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon. By way of disclosure, every Tuesday at 1:00, I have a group therapy at the VA, and that's where I was. And then I got a very curt phone call from our liaison. Ms. Freeman said, "Are you coming today?" And I said, "Yes, I am." But that wasn't a problem, and I stopped by the district's haberdashery and clothier, Dr. Peter Bohatch's office, and was able to get quaffed. Is that, no, I don't have hair, I can't quaff, can I, dressed. So anyway, so please accept my apologies. We, in May, also had Dr. Atkins visit us with the Vision 2020, and it was really, you know, a lot of things that we heard, of course, a lot of the groups have heard, but in our case, we were really enlightened by the talk about the minority recruitment that is going on and the efforts that have been made to increase this and to make this more viable for the district, and all the different recruitment fairs and the positions and the offers that have been made. So I think it's a great step forward for the district, what you all are putting in place for that. So we were certainly glad to hear that. And then, of course, the other thing that we certainly enjoyed and watched was the graduation rates and how they have increased over the last bit, and, you know, factoring in the charter schools and things like that, but the actual district's graduation rates were really up quite a bit, and, you know, that's what our committee is interested in. And then the effect of the retention and the effective employees, employee recruitment, once again, the district is really doing a great job in that, and our committee certainly looks at that, and we're very happy about that. And then we also placed three members on the MMM Committee, Site Selection Committee. I was one of them, and of course, as you know, that was unanimous decision. After we got finished listening to 20 grade-school children tell us how they wanted to go there, we were able to take a vote and get that passed. And then I would also like to say we really appreciate Ms. Patrica's participation this year as your board liaison. She was at the meetings, very actively engaged, and we appreciate that. So I'll entertain any questions except about the dress.
Board, board members?
Given your intro, do you blame me for being actively engaged? You make it, you make it very easy.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
And thank you for your longtime service, as I've said before, and this is a very important area for us, so thanks for keeping us on track. Keep your finger on. Thanks.
Thank you all.
And last, but by no means least, our Finance Advisory Committee, which is always important to us, Mr. Bell Tub.
Good afternoon, Dr. Cuckel, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. I am Bill Tub. I'm the chairman of the Finance Advisory Committee, and I'm here to give you an update on the quarterly happenings in the Finance Advisory Committee. We met twice during the last quarter. We have our final meeting of the quarter scheduled for tomorrow, and as good as I am, I can't tell you about our discussions tomorrow, but I'll do that on our next report. On April the 19th, the committee held discussions about our capital funding solutions, and we're joined by Dr. Desermore to explain the capital plan for the next decade and what issues we might have. So the committee looked at six or seven possible options about how we might cover the shortfall in funding. We looked at additional property tax capacity, which we feel getting help from the legislature has demonstrated HR 7069 is not very likely. We looked at general obligation bonds, which, as you know, is a borrowing where we go to the voters, and the voters approve an additional millage rate to cover the debt service of that borrowing for a specific purpose. We looked at the COPs bonds, which, you know, we currently use, and we have additional capacity, but that is limited. We looked at a restoration or an increase of the county impact fees, but that's out of the control of the district. We looked at sales tax. Again, voter approval is required for the additional half-cent sales tax. And we looked at doing nothing and proceed with our current facilities, which might result in a failure to maintain the constitutional amendment for class size, or we might have to go to scheduling changes such as dual sessions or year-round schools to maintain our current classing size. The committee voted to join the District Advisory Committee in recommending to the board that the board place a referendum before the voters of Lee County to be worded in such a way that the tax would sunset after five years, thus allowing the district to demonstrate fiscal responsibility with the funds collected and returned at that time for a longer renewal of the half-cent sales tax. At our May 17th meeting, the committee reviewed the takeaways from our 419 meeting, and we received information answering several questions that we'd had: the district's credit rating as compared to other Florida counties, tax rolls, values, the district's debt as a percentage of the tax roll revenues, and a comparison was made to the district's COP millage requirements as a percentage of our 1.5 capital millage revenues with other counties. As a result, the discussion of the committee, as a result of this discussion, the committee reviewed our previous vote about the half-cent sales tax and renewed it, and again, presents it to the board that that's where we think the action should go. Additionally, at our May meeting, we voted to continue meeting throughout the summer, so we will have, I guess I'll be given a quarterly report towards September by myself, but we will have another quarterly report for you. At our meeting tomorrow, we are going to be discussing legislative prerogatives. We were going to have a discussion about the infamous House Bill 7069, but I believe Mr. Dotick's out of town, so we'll postpone that till later in the summer. And we've got a presentation by the Executive Director of Financial Services, Susan Millay, and the new Director of Procurement about procurement in general and how the district encourages minority participation within that program. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Board members, Ms. Patrica.
First of all, I want to tell you that sometimes reading these agendas can be, you know, a little long, but when you refer to your friend Crystal Ball in your notes, that was, that was just a little light moment for me, and I really appreciated that. I want to point out that it's very interesting that two of our advisory committees at this point have suggested a half-cent sales tax or recommended a half-cent sales tax to us, and I'd be interested to see how we act on that. And finally, I'd like to get the board, take the board's temperature about asking the Finance Committee to bring forward a recommendation regarding the efficiency audit that we discussed at our last workshop.
Board members?
Bringing back a recommendation regarding that.
Yeah, they're going to meet during the summer. Go for it.
Okay?
Yes.
So go ahead.
Get us the information, and we'll definitely put it on our agenda.
Thank you.
Other comments, board members? Dr. Atkins, what is the status of bringing a recommendation regarding the sales tax referendum?
I think our next step would be to seek out a third party to form a, they would have to form a political action committee. I think now that we've gotten through the operation audit, and we've got really kind of a green light from the board, you would want to do that to put together that survey that we discussed and then administer the survey.
And what timeline are you looking at?
We think that we could probably get that accomplished before school starts over the course of the summer. I really was, we really had some interested parties that really wanted to see unity on the part of the board, and with that demonstrating. And then there was a, one question that came up regarding the operational audit status, and once you had your workshop on that, we have direction there. We think that we can proceed with the second part of that, which is the seeking out that third party.
Okay. Other comments or questions, board members? Well, thank you again, too, for continuing with our Finance Committee and department, and we look forward to your fall presentation.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Atkins, we have two policies to review.
Yes, the first policy, we want to bring up our folks regarding the comprehensive health education. So Ms. Ralph.
Dr. Atkins, I think I presented the white paper to you as requested. We have pre-briefed this. I just come to you today to see if you have additional questions. If you do, I'll be happy to answer those. I also have behind me members of the SHAC team here in support of the Comprehensive Health Plan.
Board members? Yep. It looks like it's a go-ahead.
That was the quickest.
I know. That's pretty unusual for me, too. And thank you all for being here and being a part of it.
Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, our next.
The Mr. Demming and Dr. Bohatch regarding our attendance policy.
Good afternoon. Today, we just wanted to bring back the attendance policy. It's been something that the high school group has been requesting for several years, and hopefully you've looked at it and agree with it.
We've had a lot of discussion about it already. So board members, anything else?
No.
Thanks for following the recommendations that we made and bring it back.
And thank you, and the high school principals, thank you.
Okay, we move to Academic Services, FSA results.
Hey, this time, we have Patty Elkin and also Soretta Ralph, and I believe this might be a historic moment for Ms. Elkin.
Yeah.
But they do, they do want to take you through a presentation regarding our FSA data, just some of our preliminary data. I think that overall, if you look at the data, I think that the school district is headed in the right direction. However, this data also gives us an opportunity to reflect on some of the policy decisions that have been made, both in the past and current, in terms of looking at how successful we have been. One of the things that we have certainly seen in the area of reading and also in the area of mathematics and science, that policy changes that have been recommended previously were not successful. Unfortunately, when it comes to particularly reading, we had a successful run a number of years ago. A couple of you were on the board at that time. There were some policy changes that were made, and then you look at what the results were afterwards, we were headed in the wrong direction. We think that we were able to get that ship turned around in many, many cases, so some of our results look positive. But we do feel that we need to move, accelerate these efforts, and move at a faster pace. There's going to be an increased emphasis on the upcoming year on student proficiency, because I think in the past, there's been an emphasis on points toward a school grade, but what lacks is proficiency. And a good example of this would be in the area of mathematics and algebra. You know, I have a study sitting right here that looks at how certain school districts across the country accelerated putting students into algebra in particular too early before they had that background, and how the results of that in Algebra II and geometry had negatively impacted those students. We have literally witnessed that in the school district firsthand. This study started with Charlotte Mecklenburg and extended out to 10 other school districts. There's other studies that support these findings as well, and our team has certainly looked at these results and has made some recommendations in terms of how we do algebra and mathematics progression, and also reading and the selection of reading materials and so forth. So a lot of great information that came out of this particular set of results. The last thing I want to say, and they'll get into more details, but our efforts toward targeting our most challenged schools are paying off. And so high-quality teachers and high-quality administrators, our DA schools have really shown some remarkable results, and so that's a positive affirmation of some of the work that we've been doing. We've got a lot more work to do, but at least we're off to a good start.
Mr. Toiber.
Before they get started, now, two points. The first point, let me make sure I'm not an educator, and a lot of our audience, they're watching or not. So what I think, I heard you say is that there is some, we have some instances in our district that we actually focused on doing what the state told us to do to improve our student grade and saying, "This is what you need to do to get a better-performing result based upon what the state legislator says is important." And instead, what that does is, the result was, our students became worse performing in geometry, by forcing them into geometry before they were ready, we actually negatively impacted our children.
I absolutely agree with that.
That's the first thing that we gathered, that what we, so what we're doing now locally at the behest of the people who are supposed to know better up in Tallahassee telling us what to do, we've got demonstrative, data-driven evidence to show we're doing it the right way by putting them in there at the rates that they need to succeed.
Yes.
First thing that I gathered, just trying to make myself so, as a non-educator, and it's because a lot of, we speak so quickly and so at such a level, because education, and what I've learned my years on the school board is, it is, it's not the old schoolhouse it used to be when a, you know, when a teacher came up and taught reading, writing, and arithmetic. It is very complex to reach our students in today's era of the information and what's required of our students. And our teachers are at such a higher level that if people have never spent time recently in a school, I encourage you to do so, to watch at the level and proficiency that our educators operate, and for our administrators, what they do to deliver the program. So I'm trying to bring this down to have you understand, state legislators don't get it either. They're not educators, they're not professionals in this industry, and they're making rules and standards that are not data-driven, that are not factually-based, that are based upon what they think they know, but they don't even take the time to know. And we're now finding demonstrative proof that what we're being told to do and forced to do is resulting at the detriment of our children. So I encourage, you know, I applaud Dr. Atkins and the rest of his staff to continue doing what's right for children. The second thing I gathered was, the second part that you talked about, and I lost that second part that we, you just, oh, was the fact that we put excessive resources and extra resources in our lower-performing schools, because those schools demonstrably needed more resources than other schools in our district. And with the passing of HB 7069, now with our restriction of our Title I funds, we're now being hampered and not being able to do that as effectively, because now they're telling us that it doesn't matter, we're just going to apply as an even swath our funds across the district, where we now, again, have demonstrative proof that- swath our funds across the district where we now, again, have demonstrative proof that that is not effective.
That is absolutely correct. In fact, uh, not just this school district, but some of the effective strategies utilized in Miami-Dade where they also, uh, were able to use their Title I dollars to really focus on the needs of some of your most poverty-stricken schools. Now, those efforts are also going to be hampered as well as our efforts here in the school district of Lee County. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification and lead-in. And so we will now turn our attention to our speakers today.
So our presentation is over.
Great.
Thank you, board members, Dr. Atkins, for that lead-in. Um, today we want to talk to you about the assessment results, and we're not going to read the PowerPoint to you. Uh, we provided that information to you as backup, and you've received other information, I'm sure, from the superintendent over the past few days since the assessment results have come out. Um, I'm honored to be here today along with Ms. Elkin. Um, Ms. Elkin, of course, is retiring at the end of the week. Um, we won't ponder on that any longer. She has threatened me not to talk about it. So we, we won't talk about it anymore. So we will, we'll start the presentation. So the first thing we want to talk about today is the FSA is just one measure of student progression. Uh, to meet the goals that we have set in Vision 2020, we need to focus on several areas to ensure our students are having achievement. And if we truly want to move that needle, we need to focus on those areas. Uh, those areas include, as Dr. Atkins talked about, uh, increase in student proficiency and decreasing our level ones and twos. And when we look at our DA in low-performing schools, those schools are, they have a high population of level ones and twos. And to ensure student success, we have to reduce those level ones and twos. We also need to close the achievement gap of those subgroups or subpopulation within our schools. Uh, that means we have to look at our students with disabilities. We have to look at our English-language learners. We have to look at our economically disadvantaged students. We have to look at our African-American population. And we have to look at those students in the areas of ELA in math and science and in social studies. We have to reduce those subpopulations and gaps. We have to look at the graduation rate of all of those students because we need to make sure that all of our students are graduating. We, we're, we're increasing our graduation rate. Patty and I talked about that before we came out here today. Our graduation rate is increasing, but we need to look at all students, even our students in the charter schools, because we need to make sure that those are increasing. We'll have a presentation for you in July on our graduation rate. We also need to eliminate our low-performing schools. We don't want to have a conversation about low-performing schools. We don't, we should not have those in the school district of Lee County. All students and all schools should be successful.
So let's talk a little bit about the results that came out in school grades because that's the common question that comes up this time of year is, "How does this relate to school grades? Is it the same as school grades? Can we project our school grade from the assessment results that came out?" And they are a little bit different. What just came out is all students. And as you may or may not realize, for school grades, not all students are included in that final calculation. And there are a few key differences that I included on the slide. One is our ELL population. For student achievement, when we talk about achievement, students who are ELL and have been in the district or in the country less than two years are not included in that proficiency number, in that number of three through five. Even though we work with those students very, very hard to bring them up to that level three through five, the state kind of gives us a little break when it comes to school grade and gives us those two years to bring those students up. Because quite often, those students are students, they've never stepped foot in a school, not just in the United States, but never in a school. The other piece that's a little different is students who withdraw. A school may have students at their school during October, which is Survey Two, and February, which is Survey Three, and they may then go to another school prior to when they take the state assessment. And if they go to that other school and they withdraw, then they would not count for the school with which they were at for Survey Two and Three. They still are included in the district, but for the school, if they're not there for both Survey Two October and Survey Three February and the time of testing, they will not be included. And I explain all of that so that when school grades come out, if you actually sat and looked at the percentage of proficiency at ELA at one school, it might be a little different with school grades than it was just released. In general, it usually goes up two or three percent when we take out those students that aren't included. The last question we get quite often this time of year is when, when we hear about school grades. Traditionally, the state releases those in early July. It's usually sometime after the Fourth of July, but before the end of July. So we'll be anticipating those anytime in the next couple of weeks. All the charts are ready, all the data's ready. We're just ready for the release of those grades.
The next two slides we want to talk about are ELA. Um, when we're looking at our ELA, we did make some gains, but they weren't, they weren't the gains that we wanted to make. Uh, we saw growth, but we're not growing as fast as the state. We're not growing as fast as those districts that we want to be compared to, those high-performing districts. We want to be up there with the big districts. Uh, our growth in third grade actually met the milestone that our third grade, what we were focused on, the three percent, but we want to be outperforming other third grades. Uh, we met that milestone for Vision 2020, but we want to do better than that. Uh, we're, we're going to increase that. But what we did see is a decrease in our level ones, which, which that's an improvement. And that's something that we, we're happy about, especially in our DA schools. Uh, we want to improve that proficiency of students and those subpopulations again. Some school highlights that I want to point out to you, especially to show, uh, increase in number of students at proficiency for level three through fives. In third grade at elementary, Bay Shore saw an increase of 16 percent. Franklin Park, 16 percent. And Pine Island, up 32. The fourth grade, James Stevens, one of our DA schools, if you recall, Dr. Atkins had to present at the state board meeting, James Stevens, fourth grade, up 20. Orangewood, up 18. For fifth grade, Fort Myers Beach, up 23. Gateway Elementary, up 17. And North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, up 14.
And the tremendous increases continue at middle school and high school. For example, in sixth grade ELA, level three through five increased 11 points at Harns Marsh Middle. Lexington Middle saw the biggest increase with 14 points at seventh grade. Challenger Middle, 10-point increase in seventh grade ELA. When it comes to eighth grade, we had two schools that made grade increases. They were both K eights, the Alva School and the Sanibel School. High school Dunbar, both in ninth grade and 10th grade, had tremendous increases in level three through fives. In ninth grade, they increased by seven percentage points, and in 10th grade, they increased by 10 percentage points. Also at ninth grade, Lee Virtual increased by 22 points, and Riverdale by seven points at the 10th grade level in ELA.
For the 2017-18 school year, we're going to see a significant focus on reading. Um, what we're going to do district-wide, pre-K through 12, is we're going to focus on reading as Dr. Atkins talked about. We have to align our arrows. We have to focus on that proficiency. We're going to provide staff with those resources necessary to meet the needs of those students at the level they're at. We need to provide resources that are the same at each school because we have a high mobility rate of students. We have students transferring from school to school. If they're using different resources when they go to a different school, it's not going to help those students. So we're purchasing materials for those students at the schools. We're also going to provide training for teachers because those teachers need our support, and that training's going to be ongoing throughout the school year. We started this training back in April. We've had it in May, and it'll be continuing during preschool week and throughout the school year. We also want to make sure that those programs are used with fidelity. We've talked about this before at briefings when we've talked about our budget, but we have to ensure the fidelity is ongoing. We'll continue using progress monitoring tools because we have to monitor the success of students and make sure that instruction is ongoing. But it's important to provide interventions, core materials, and phonics at an early age because our students need the support, our staff need the support, and to ensure the success of those students. It's a good thing that we're providing the resources, and it's time to get back to what's important for instruction of the students. And again, it's about the proficiency of the students. When we're looking, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong key. When we're looking at the math for our students, we showed improvement. As you can see from the chart, we, we made gains in several areas, but as with ELA, we want to ensure all students have those skills necessary for them to be successful. Dr. Atkins, again, talked about the success in Algebra I and Algebra II. They showed gains, and we can attribute some of that to a focus on monitoring the students to make sure that we had the right students in the right courses. But we, we also have to look at whether those students had the skills. We didn't show the increase in geometry, but we have to keep in mind, our Algebra I and Algebra II classes are typically double-blocked. Our geometry is not. I want to also remind you that Algebra II is no longer required for the EOC as effective in July. I want to also remind you that we're doing a new progression plan for algebra. Um, at the middle school level, we're also, we're looking at our students to make sure that they're on the right path, our skills to ensure that those standards are being met. We've determined that many students, if they start Algebra I too early, they're missing up to 25 standards in math. If those standards are not met, they don't have those skills necessary, and they don't get them back. They're passing enough skills and standards to pass the algebra test, but they're not going to be successful later on. So we want to make sure all those students are ready, they're developmentally ready to be successful. Our standards that we're ensuring that they're meeting, we want to make sure that they're successful for the future, not just for one grade level. Again, it's about proficiency.
So just to, to emphasize that point, if you, one of the things, if you look at the geometry, um, results, that is, that, those results are absolutely aligned with what the, the research would say happens if you are prematurely putting kids into Algebra I before they are ready. Because where, where that shows up is later on when they move into Algebra II, and particularly geometry, believe it or not, which was a result that surprised me out of that particular study. But, so what you're going to see moving forward, now that this year, we really were, we took a step toward better identification of putting students in Algebra I that were ready to be in Algebra I, you will see that start to impact your Algebra II and also your geometry numbers moving forward and, and ultimately, I think, success, uh, in high school in general. Um, we are still not there yet. I have just, we have discovered pockets this year in middle school where, uh, again, too many students into algebra, and then you look at the proficiency in, in algebra and also in mathematics was, uh, not what it should be at those schools that did that. So we're taking corrective action. But the purpose for that, again, was to try to get the acceleration points in algebra and, and get that higher school grade. But I ask you, what is that doing for the student? You know, I think we, so what we're doing moving forward is every school will have proficiency targets that we will set, that they are, will be expected to make. So the focus for them will not be as much on the grade as it will be on achieving proficiency. Now, gains are helpful. We want gains because that helps you toward proficiency. Um, but you also have to focus on making sure you're trying to get level one students up to level two, up to level three, rather than worrying about putting, you know, getting kids into a certain course to get the acceleration points. And something else that we are looking to do, because middle school, schools are concerned about their grade, obviously, uh, is working with them to get them other coursework such as Microsoft, to get that down at the middle school level so that they can get those points that way. And, and really, if you think about it, a student becoming proficient in Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, that's something that you would really want that student to be proficient in. In middle school, as they move into high school, not wait to high school before you start to get that skill, which is what's happening now.
We've also opened up other opportunities for career and tech ed for acceleration points that Rita and her department have offered for the middle school to allow those acceleration points that can be electives, that can serve for the same opportunities.
Does that include the soft skill courses that they're, they're now developing, that Rita's now developing as far as presentation skills and those type of things that I know that they're also working on?
I don't think that those are available for acceleration points. I think she's offering those for, um, some of our adults that are out there.
So when you look at the chart, you'll see grades three through eight math, you see a change of one. So that's an increase in proficiency. But what I'd like to highlight is a few of our schools that showed tremendous increases in proficiency, well above that one that we had as an average in the district. For example, third grade math at Colonial increased proficiency by 23 percentage points. Benita Springs Elementary and J. Colen English at fourth grade increased by 24 points. James Stevens, fifth grade, one of our DA schools that we put a ton of resources in and really, really worked with, 42 percent increase in proficiency. Sixth grade, Veterans Park, increased by 20 percent. Seventh grade, the Alva School, 13 percent. Eighth grade and algebra, Veterans Park, 54 percent increase in eighth grade math, 28 percent increase of proficiency in algebra. When we talk about high school, Island Coast had tremendous increases in their proficiency, or the level three through fives, 45 percent increase. Estero, 19 percent increase. Geometry, Cape had an increase of 9 percent. East had an increase of 7 percent, another one of our DA schools that we really focused on supporting. And lastly, in Algebra II, Ida Baker saw an increase of 32 percent of their students' level three through five increase.
Just a, a couple other, other highlights I just want to mention. Um, if you think about some of our schools that we put resources, where we put considerable resources, Ashley Lamar at Manatee will likely still wind up a D. However, um, what you had, what his challenge was, was he was starting from a low F with 30 teachers to hire in the month of July. And he wound up realizing gain in every single academic area tested. Okay? Every si, there was only one other elementary school where that happened, and that was Heights Elementary School. So, here's Mr. Lamar, turnaround school. He will show up on the state as, as a D. But that doesn't tell the story of what happened at that particular school. Incredible results. Um, James Stevens, which was mentioned earlier, again, uh, that is an example where you take a great leader and you allow that person to bring in great teachers, and you see incredible results. That's not because I go infusing a bunch of, of, uh, level five kids into that school. You know, the population stayed the same. The mindset is different. It's, instead of trying to game a system, it's about, all right, let me take a level one or level two kid and move them into proficiency where they're, they're mastering the content, uh, in a ELA in mathematics. Now, what Mr. Savage is, is doing, he said, you know, at first, we're going to move that number the most in mathematics because ELA takes longer, but gradually you're going to see that ELA number. And he still had some good numbers in ELA. But then, he's thinking about also building, coming through into the school. So he's got that, that SIGIVOR grant where he's got a pre-K program preparing the kids even for kindergarten. So, that's setting that school up for success way into the future.
Mr. Toiber.
Dr. Atkins, with that, with both Manatee's philosophy and, and, um, at James Stevens, how is that, you know, you made a commitment to the state. Are, are we still going to be able to fulfill the commitment that we made for those schools?
Uh, yes. Um, we, first of all, my, my commitment to the state regarding James Stevens was going to be that I, I, we guaranteed a C, which made Ken nervous. It looks like it's going to be a B. Uh, I didn't make the same, uh, boast with Manatee. However, I do understand from, uh, Dr. Browder that, that we do have a two-year plan, and so as long as we continue to see results, we should be fine from a state perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, continue. Thank you.
So when we look at our science scores, uh, we did make some gains again, uh, but again, we want to continue to improve that proficiency. We've reviewed our progression and our support for science. Our students for the 17-18 school year will focus on earth science in the sixth grade and comprehensive in the seventh and eighth. But our new adoption for the 18-19 school year will be a new focus in a progression. We will have earth in the sixth grade and seven, life science in the seventh, and we'll also have physical science in the eighth grade. Our high school will also have a change.
Our high school will also have a change, will focus on environmental in the ninth with level, in levels one, two, and three. And in 10th grade, we'll have biology for our Level I, IIs and IIs. Our elementary schools are going to have a strong emphasis this year in fifth grade with PCL. That's promoting science for our English language learners. The reason that's really effective, it's a grant that we used in the past, we showed great results when we had it as a pilot with our schools. But what it does, it's a hands-on activity, but it focuses on vocabulary. Students really learn to interact, plus they also get that vocabulary development and they, they learn to make the connections. When students learn to interact and they build on that vocabulary, it connects with them and they remember it. That's part of learning and it's building it. That's probably what's going to be successful with our Standards for Excellence, because once we learn it, it's there for life.
So in social studies, there isn't a big change, either at the state level really or the district level. In fact, the district dropped a little bit in civics, as you'll see. One of the challenges that has really tied our hands with social studies is that we're tied to the state's instructional materials adoption schedule. And as Mr. Toibert mentioned earlier, we actually were finally able to go through that process this year and adopt those materials, thanks to the help of many committees, including Curriculum Advisory Committee. It has been more than eight years since we have been permitted to adopt materials for social studies. So as you can see, that's a real challenge for our teachers in our classrooms and our students. But thankfully, we've gone through that adoption process. We do have recommended materials, they are budgeted, and they will be in the classrooms in the fall. Training, professional development, which is really key, is already going on now and will go on throughout the summer and of course, throughout the school year to support those teachers. We'll be monitoring that data through the data chats quarterly and really looking at how this impacts our students in the coming year.
One of the things I just want to mention in support of, of what she just said with the materials, one of the things, if you don't have the, the proper materials in place, it does have an impact because they're not, the older, older materials are not as aligned with the standards because we've had changes over the last number of years. Back to ELA, remember ELA, we're three years away from an adoption. So because of, of some of the policy changes that had previously been made, that resulted in materials being thrown out and things like that, we had significant gaps from school to school in terms of, of proper coverage of the six critical components of reading. In the white paper as it relates to budget, you'll have more detail, so I won't go into that in detail here. However, it does demonstrate the importance of having not only the proper curriculum materials in place, but also probably more importantly, the training that supports that curriculum, which is what we are seeing going on right now over the course of the summer than also throughout the year. There's something, and I don't know if you want to mention this, Soretta, but this particular past year, we've actually provided more embedded professional development that has been deployed from the district office out to schools, significantly more than we had the previous year. So that's, that's an accomplishment that I think we should be proud of.
Actually, that's what I was going to talk about now.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. These next two slides, I think, are going to be really significant because it talks about what you guys have just been talking about, about that targeted support. When you're looking at our support that we've provided to our DA schools, it really shows what happens when you put support and money with schools, resources, it makes a difference. The first slide, it shows about ELA. Now, it takes longer to make a true difference with ELA because that support, it takes longer. When students are behind, they, the difference, it's significant, especially at the older level students. But with our DA versus non-DA students, we have made a difference. We're starting to make those gains. At the elementary level, with our professional development and leadership specialists this year, we had an increase of over 547% school support out there. Our trained professionals, content specialists, were out in the buildings teaching and they were providing training and modeling lessons at the elementary level. At the middle school level, there was an increase of 787%. That's thanks to your support in a reorganization of the Curriculum and Staff Development Department. They were in there working with the most at-risk students and they were working beside those new teachers, those new teachers that need the most help. At the high school level, there was a 512% increase. They were at Eastleigh County High School, three professional development leadership specialists every day at Eastleigh County High School, teaching content to those at-risk students and modeling lessons for teachers. It shows because they're making those gains. Thank you for allowing that to happen.
So when it comes to math, you see a little bit of a change, maybe a little bit quicker with our DA schools. Really focused efforts on supporting those schools have really showed some tremendous increases, again, in proficiency, those Level III through V students. Every single one of our DA schools made an increase in math except for one. Every single one except for one made an increase in the number or the percentage of Level III through V students. Two that I'd really like to highlight, and I know you've heard them before, but I just have to highlight them. One of them is James Stevens. James Stevens really saw tremendous growth. When we put all their grade levels of math together and we average it all out, 26% greater increase for all of their III, IVs and V's in proficiency. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Colonial. Colonial's been on our radar for a couple of years, and we've talked about Colonial. Two years in a row, they have made double-digit increases in their Level III through V percent. This year, 20, or 16 the year before, 10%. Two years in a row, double, that's really tough to do two years in a row. So that effort, all of that work, those dynamic leaders and teachers, because we go into those schools and you can feel it when you're in the schools, it's really making a difference. And they're really moving the percentage of students that are proficient up.
Supporting student achievement, that's what's going to make the difference. The couple of things that we want to highlight on this page is our ESE and ELL support. If we're going to make a difference, those are the two areas that we have to continue to make a focus. This year with our ESE support, we want to make sure that we're focusing on that core content area, we're going to have those resources in place, we're going to work with our MTSS, and we're also going to work with our early warning system. We have to identify those students and provide that support. No child can slip through the cracks. We have to make sure that we're there, identifying students and getting the needed support to them early and making sure that we're there to support them, day in and day out.
When we talk about DA schools and we talk about struggling schools, one of the things that's noteworthy is our ELL population, that's our English language learners. About 25% of that total population of those students, they're at our DA schools. They're concentrated at those schools. So we're really focusing in the future and have in this past year, those efforts and those resources to support those schools, because that's about a quarter of our population.
Can you repeat that?
About 25% of our ELL students are housed, attend our DA schools.
Thank you. I should have said please.
It's only a handful of schools. Ms. LaRiva here.
Lots of thoughts came through my mind. Thank you so much for presentation. Thank you to our teachers, our administrators out there for all the hard work you're doing and the successes, and thank you families. But just one thing that I'm noteworthy for the fifth graders at James Stevens, I still remember walking into the fifth grade group of kiddos where the high school students, where they are tutoring and working with those kids on their math. And just, there's a lot to be said about those types of partnerships that really show significance for our kids and what our kids need. Then another thought occurred to me is our fam, our students and their families, if they are currently attending a DA school, they receive this letter saying, you have the option to attend another school that is more high-performing, and if you would like to do that. Many of our parents do that, but they do not realize what we have done as a district with the types of support we have put into those DA schools. And many of those students that struggle have gone to a school that's been high-performing, but they don't have those, that scaffolding in place for a struggling learner. And I don't know if there's a way we can promote that that would make the state happy, but we do need to let people know that we are doing everything we can in those struggling schools to provide all that we need for our students and then some. So, thank you. Very eye-opening. I can't wait till we get to see everything as time goes on.
Ms. Patricam.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, Patty, I think you're so, 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 so smart, and I'm really sad that you're leaving. I think you're the first, one of the first staff members who helped me understand a very difficult concept, which was VAM, and I still don't understand it the way you do. And I don't know how anyone in this district is going to understand it when you're not here, but thank you very much for your service. Thank you for all that you've done, and I'm going to miss you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
And I want to piggyback on that. Another thought came to my mind. I saw a presentation by Colonial one time, and I think that some of the scaffolding includes very basic supports that our leaders and our teachers and our support staff are providing for the students who struggle in many ways. In fact, they not only make sure that the kids know they're safe, they feed them, and they build very good relationships with them so they understand what's happening in that child's life that may be getting in the way of the academic success. And I attribute that piece also as part of what has helped the children to be able to focus on the academics and be, be more successful. And Patty, I mean, your fingerprint and your footprint are all over this district in many different areas, and thank you because you've left a wonderful legacy. So enjoy the mountains, travel safely, and God bless you when you retire. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And I think that is echoed by everybody. You will be greatly missed. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure serving.
Any other questions, comments, board members?
All right. Thank you so much. We're, we're on our way to bigger and better things. Continuous systemic improvement.
And now we move to our budget presentation. Dr. Decemours, Dr. Atkins, did you want to make an introduction?
I just, I just want to say first of all that this has been a true team effort. A lot of time and effort has been put into this year's budget. And, you know, we're moving toward, quickly toward the culmination of that. I think Dr. Decemours and her team has really done a phenomenal job. And then the second thing is that something I learned this year that we will apply next year is that we start working on the following year's budget immediately after the passage of this one. So, so we talk about a continuous progress or process, this budget for next year is going to have to be that. Because I think with all the work that went into it, I think that, you know, there's even more that we, we could have done if we had been able to start a little bit earlier, which is what we'll do next time.
And I'd like to add a comment before you begin. The white paper that you put out yesterday connecting our 2020 Vision 2020 and all the research and data that we're doing to accomplish those goals is directly tied to this budget. And so that gives us all the arrows going in the same direction, and we're, we're really proud to be there.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Atkins. Our, the time, of course, is here to go through the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018. You all have, of course, the presentation here and then some extensive backup within your briefing material. We will not necessarily go through the whole PowerPoint today because you all have received that backup, but within the materials that you have, there's just a few things that we wanted to point out. That material, of course, contains the district's new organizational chart for FY18. And with that organizational chart, there is, of course, fiscal impact related to that with new positions or changes to positions that we, that we are suggesting today through our preliminary budget listing. Those changes you will see wrapped up within the job descriptions that are also included within the preliminary budget backup. So each of the changes to those job descriptions correspond to or correlate to one of the changes that we're asking for within the budget, which is either contained in the organizational chart or in the detailed list of positions and other things that have been requested within the budget for FY18. Those job descriptions, of course, will be on this evening's board agenda item to approve, and if those are done, then several of those changes will take place as of July 1st, as noted within the briefing material, as long as those changes are approved. So speaking of the detailed list of new positions, in addition, there's also a detailed list of other additional resources that have been asked for at the department level. We typically go through and list those out in detail so you know at the department level what specifically has been asked for, and then we have an overview within the presentation of what had been provided to schools. And more importantly, as you mentioned, Dr. Kuckel, within the white paper, there is kind of a summary of those additional resources and how those additional resources relate to a priority within the budget, and then also, very importantly, what data will be used to analyze whether those additional resources have been successful in achieving what we try, what we are trying to achieve with allocating those additional resources. And so those are the things that you all should look forward to hearing a little bit more reporting about in the future. So in the PowerPoint here, you see the listing of our department increases and what the cost is that is associated with those, and then, as I said, you mentioned earlier, the detailed backup provided within the briefing materials. The preliminary budget numbers here, as are listed, are just that preliminary. There are certain things that are, some forces acting here that will change what you see here now and what you will be seeing at the tentative budget brief. So just to explain a little bit, within debt service funds, you see a large decrease there between what we show in FY17 and what we're looking at in FY18. The difference there has to do with the refunding or the refinancing of debt that took place in FY17 that, where we recognize some additional revenue within the debt service funds. Those, of course, are now budgeted for in FY18, so that's why you see the significant decrease there in debt service. In capital, you see there that there is a decrease there. Basically, that's showing kind of the spending down of our funds over the five-year window as is related or as is seen in the five-year capital plan. This number, however, might change depending on what happens with our fund balance, or that is, those funds that roll forward between FY17 and FY18. If we don't have as many funds expended in FY17 because the projects are not quite completed, those funds will roll forward into FY18 and make that FY18 budget number bigger than what it is now, but the end result of the five-year plan is still the same because those funds are committed. And then with the federal funds, you will see those dollar amounts go up as we continue to, to recognize federal grants within our budget as we move between the tentative and the final.
We just want to kind of give you the next steps, what's going to move forward with the budget. So what's going to happen in July? Oh, thank you. In July, we'll come with the tentative budget, that's on July 25th. Before that, you'll receive the tentative budget package. It's not going to come to you like you normally would for briefing material because of some statutory requirements. We have to advertise that and we'll make sure that you have the full package before it's advertised so that you'll know what's going to show up in the paper. And it's proposed to be advertised and you approve to have it advertised on the 21st. The tentative budget hearing will be on the 25th. And then some of the differences that you'll see between now and then are going to be the, on July 19th, the state's required to certify the new tax rule to us, and as soon as they do that, of course, will change all of our numbers as well as give us our new required local effort numbers, our mileage rates to go by. So that will be the main changes that you're going to see between now and the tentative budget. And then we'll brief you again in August before we do the final budget, and then, of course, the final budget hearing will be on September 5th.
So just to emphasize that a little bit more, typically, if we were going to So, just to emphasize that a little bit more, typically, if we were going to do the tentative budget hearing on July 25th, you all will get the backup materials on, say, the 18th or the 19th. But according to the dates that are in statute, we will not receive the recalculated FEFP until July 19. And then we have to do some calculations within the budget because, as Kelly mentioned, the tax, the tax rates and amounts in the budget will change. And so, when the superintendent will present his proposed tentative budget to the board by July 21st, as opposed to when you would typically expect to get it about a week before the briefing takes place because of those statutory requirements. So, so that's when you would expect to receive what looks like the tentative budget for FY18. So, that being said, I think we'll open it up to any questions you might have about the preliminary budget?
Board members?
I think we've been talking about this for a long time now, and we're on board with the direction that we're taking, and of course, the numbers follow that. So...
I don't have questions. I just have two comments. And I told Dr. Atkins this in our meeting. Throughout your backup material, I saw that some of the recommendations were made because of the teacher advisory committee. And I just think it's fantastic that you're listening to teachers, and that was also in the white paper that you provided as well. I think it's great that he's listening to teachers and putting his money where his mouth is, right? This is, we have goals in Vision 2020, and he's funneling resources toward achieving those goals. And that's bottom line. I know it's a team effort, but you're the leader, so, good job.
And measuring the outcomes. Anything else, board members? Well, you all have put a lot, a lot, a lot of work into this, and we thank you very much, and we'll look forward to the next update.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Our next presentation, Dr. Atkins, is District Property and Growth.
Again, this will be Mr. Mora and Ms. Huff, who will give us an update. And they'll talk about, really, our growth in particular. I think there were some questions that also came up in terms of how we're working with other counties and municipalities related to our growth. And I think that's something that they will cover today, as well as give us an update in terms of where we are long range. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mora and Ms. Huff to take us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board members and Mr. Martin. Today, Dawn Huff, our long-range planner, is here to present the district's property and growth presentation. And I'm going to jump right in. You have the backup materials. One of the most important jobs that planning department has is managing our current inventory of property and assuring that we have property for schools well into the future as we work our projection models to determine where students will live. So to that end, we've taken a look at our inventory of property and started to earmark it for development for schools and other ancillary sites. I'll start by saying that the state did have some guidelines in regards to how big of a site you'd need for a school to be built on. They no longer have those guidelines, but we as a staff still follow them. You'll see them listed here. They're lower than what we minimumly look for in property. We like the flexibility of building the schools to accommodate growth as well as make sure that we have the correct flow of traffic onto and into the school. So those are guidelines that we generally follow, but our minimums are in those parentheses as you see there. Currently, the district has done a great job of maintaining a great inventory. I'll give kudos to the past boards that were thoughtful and future-thinking in assuring that we had property well into the future. We have 28 parcels of vacant land throughout the school district at this point. Moats were purchased between 2003 and 2008, and many of us will recall that was the height of the real estate market. So many of the properties we bought were at a very high premium. Obviously, some of those properties don't hold their value on the market like they used to, but they still are very valuable to the school district. Land is an asset in southwest Florida, as we learned from our search for property in Benita Springs for a high school, LLL. So we understand that, and we think being prudent stewards of the property and leveraging it whenever we can for schools or ancillary facilities is a very important job for planning. As you can see from this map here, this demonstrates where we have our current properties. It is also highlighting how many acres those school sites are. They're spread pretty evenly across the school district. We're a little light in the south zone, as you can see right there, and pretty heavy in the Cape because at the time, we were growing very rapidly in Cape Coral. So we purchased a lot of future properties there. While we don't have the growth there now, it's something that we have to be mindful of. It's not built out yet, particularly in the north part of the Cape, so it's something we keep our eye on. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn to discuss a little bit about the 28 vacant parcels that we currently have in the district.
Good afternoon, board, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. Out of the 28 parcels of vacant land, we have two quarter-acre parcels, one just over a half acre, one 10-acre standalone parcel, two 10-acre parcels that are adjacent to two different schools. And we actually, out of the 28 parcels, we have 22 that are buildable, meaning they're large enough to house a school anywhere from elementary to high school. So, there are a few parcels, obviously, with the smaller ones that I've stated that are not suitable for a school. A couple of them, we are recommending that they be sold. A couple of them, we need to keep for reasons that I'll state here. So the, one of the quarter-acre parcels is in Cape Coral. It's on a freshwater canal. It was, assuming donated to the district in 1977. Don't know the history on that, but it doesn't seem like there's any issues with selling that parcel, so it's one we may recommend being sold, to sell. There's one adjacent to Tanglewood Elementary. This could be utilized in the future. We don't need it at this time, but for expanding the ingress and egress of the school. So, you know, it's a good idea to keep that one because it is right on the main road. There's a, the parcel that's just over a half acre is located on Kea Costa. There's always been some question on this parcel. It's not buildable. It's not really accessible except by boat. It may not, it can't be sold. It has a revert-to-seller clause within the deed. So, we, what we're recommending, even though it was purchased in 1911, we're suggesting that we revert it back to the families because there are still living descendants within the family.
I'll add to that. That's a totally landlocked piece of property. It's not waterfront, so it's very difficult to access without going over other people's properties.
Mr. Toibert?
My understanding was there's only, and this was given to the school for the purpose of, you know, at that time, whether it be a school or whatever, and had to revert back the remainder men was in the estate and their lineage. My understanding was there's only one less left living decedent. And after that point, when that decedent dies, at that point, then it was, then we could sell it. So I don't know the advantage of reverting it back to them rather than holding it unless just, I guess it's cost basis of the taxes, but we're tax exempt, so there is no carrying cost. So...
That, that very well could be true. I mean, at this point, I have spoken to descendants of the, of the estate or family, and they're still around, so how many there are, I don't know. The benefit to the district, I guess we could sell it at that time, but we don't know when that is. But to sell it would be advantageous to get it back on the tax rolls. But, you know, we could talk about that, of course. Any other questions on that one? There, the individual 10-acre parcel, this is located in Cape Coral. It's a, it was the old ALC facility, and we suggest maybe to possibly sell and perfectly exchange that parcel for something more conducive. There are two 10-acre parcels, as I said, adjacent to schools. One is Pine Island Elementary. We're actually in some form of preliminary negotiations with a buyer on that property. We looked at the forecast growth, and we really don't have a need for expansion indefinitely on that site. The school doesn't need to expand. The population on that, on Pine Island just isn't, it's just not there and doesn't show a projected need in the future. So, okay, so for property by zone, within the east zone, we have nine parcels, and all nine parcels are conducive to put a school on. In the south zone, there's five schools. Three are conducive for a school site. The other two sites, as we said, the one is adjacent Tanglewood, and they're, the other one is not conducive as well. In the west zone, we have 10 acre par, or, I'm sorry, 14 parcels. 10 are conducive for a school, and four are not. Go ahead.
I just want to go back to south for a second. The Tower Road facility, that was an issue with Benita High School. Is it because it's in the DRGR? Do I recall that correctly? So how are we ever going to be able to build there?
Technically, we can. That's more of community pushback. It's not something that stops us from building on that site.
I know, but that's what I meant.
Right.
How are we ever going to get the community to get behind us building there?
Do we need approval? No.
I think that's a site that we, we should keep within our inventory, looking at development out east in Benita and Astero, because there's several developments, as I'm sure you know, that are going up out there. I think that will eventually kind of go by the wayside as far as, you know, fighting the issues with the DRGR. And most of these facilities, you know, they're providing, and the school district would do the same, where it wouldn't have much of an effect on a DRGR, on the DRGR. And, and most people aren't always aware of that, but there are ways to work around that.
Other questions, board members, comments? Mr. Toibert?
The 10-acre, well, first off, you know, and I know a lot of these were bought at a premium. You know, Dr. Cuck and I were on the board at the point when we came in, and there was no land bank whatsoever. So we were really at a, at a disadvantage that we had to buy this stuff. So it's unfortunate that now prices have not yet recovered. But I remember that the 10-acre, at one point, it was going to be a joint co-op with Cape Coral, an educational complex at some point. You know, they were, and that went by the wayside. Have they completely moved off that with no intention of going back to that concept or...
Rec Department? What are we talking about in Cape Coral?
I, I don't quite remember, Dr. Atkins. Maybe you can help me in my, but there was a, we were going to do a joint venture with Cape Coral, a library and a school or some, I can't remember, some educational complex because it's right on Del Prado and Diplomat, and it's a really, I mean, it's, it's the entrance into Cape Coral. And so to have our presence there, you know, I thought to have some type of educational facility there, I don't know whether it'd be applicable for a, for a, an IT or a, or a, some advanced learning, you know, complex or something there. I don't know.
10 acres, is it?
10 acres.
It's definitely in a very nice spot commercially and residentially. And we've been approached with a lot of ideas. I think the last one you probably heard is developing teacher housing there. We moved off of that, but there's been many people approach us in regards to that property. So I, I agree. That's a property that we can leverage either for our own use or into the future, we hold on to it and see if we can develop something there to have a footprint there.
And through this whole process, this is some preliminary work that we've done, but we will look at all these properties. These are just some basic recommendations. But we will look at properties and look at what's in the best interest for the district, the, the local municipality, because we do have to work with them when we are purchasing property, especially not necessarily when we sell, but when we purchase them. Some of the municipalities are interested in a couple of our properties, so it's something that we work, whether we sell it to them, exchange it for something that they have, or work in conjunction to put up a facility, as you suggested.
One of the questions that I heard recently was related to the Astero High School property or that 10 acres adjacent to that. Could you update them where we are with that piece?
Is it the 10 acres adjacent to Astero or the proposal that we possibly build another school on Astero's campus, Dr. Atkins? I know we've had two inquiries about Astero High School recently.
The one adjacent that we're talking to the city about?
Oh, absolutely. The 10 acres on Block Lane. We're currently in negotiation with the county to swap that particular piece of property to help finance some of the road improvements at the Benita Springs High School project, particularly the turn signal, or I'm sorry, the traffic signal that we have at the main entrance. So we're trying to mitigate that cost of development on the district side by using that property and leveraging it for that purpose.
Thank you.
Board members? Well, thank you. That, that's certainly food for thought as we continue to grow in the district. And what Mr. Toibert was talking about when we were purchasing property was we were growing by 2,500-plus students every year, and that is high school and a half, or middle school and a half, and every year. So we were buying land as fast as we could, not knowing when that bubble was going to end. And it ended it as abruptly as it started, but fortunately, we do have some land as a result of that. We probably paid more than we would pay today, but at that time, we didn't know that we weren't going to need it. Any other comments or questions, board members? Thank you. That was...
Dr. Cuck, we do have a little bit more if possible. If we're up against the time, just let us know.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I thought you were ending it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So some of the criteria we have in determining locations of future property, or future schools, rather, it's the inventory that we currently have or looking for sites as we did for the Benita High School. We look at projection utilization rates within the district, the zones and the subzones, the number of students within two and five miles, school, social and land use factors, site development costs, and future land use maps for properties that we are looking for. We look at the future land use map. So that's working with what each local municipality has within their future land use and their comp plan to make sure that a school is, is, there's ability to have a school where we're looking. Community needs, this is meaning access by the community and students, supporting services such as libraries, working with local partnerships with local governments like for Parks and Rec.
Can I turn it back over to Mr. Mora?
Dawn Meck mentioned projected utilization rates, and some of our recommendations for the use of the property is based on enrollment projections. And we were very fortunate to work with Dr. Paul Van Bueskirk of Ben Bueskirk and Rifle Associates. He's a demographer that's worked with a lot of the municipalities in our area and a few school districts into building a more granular model that allows us to determine where the growth is occurring. There's obviously a lot of projection models that are available to us that look at the general population. Bieber, not Justin, but Bieber, the Bureau of Economic Business and Research, do produce a projection for our county's growth over a 10, 15, 20-year period. And the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council does as well. The Department of Education does as well. They use COFTI projections. Now, I want to point out to you that those projections aren't very granular. They're basically at the district level, and they don't get granular to the zone or the school or the grade level. And that's what our model does. It's very, it's very detailed. It allows us to really pick up on trends and where enrollment growth is going to occur in each of our zones and subzones. So we've employed that to kind of recommend what we do with the properties that we have in inventory. And I won't do this, I won't go through this in detail, but you have it as backup. We're looking at the east zone vacant land, and here's how we've earmarked construction on these particular sites. And the utilization rates are there. That was used also to determine when we needed a school and where we needed a school based on the growth in a particular zone and level. We've done that also in the south zone. And marked in yellow is the property that we're determining is not large enough for a school site, but could be considered for other purposes. And you can see the utilization rates in the south. Now, the list of the south properties is kind of concerning to us because, you know, that's where we're seeing some continued growth. And if some of those developmental orders east of I-75 come to fruition, we're going to see some increased population down there as well. It's something that we have to be mindful of as we take a look at our inventory 15, 20 years out. And then we look at the west zone. As I mentioned, we have quite a bit of inventory there, not anticipating a whole lot of growth out there, but we have earmarked some properties out there 10 years out. We have one within the next six years for a middle and high possibly. And you'll see the utilization rates in the west as well. So, in a nutshell, we're growing all over. We got to be mindful of where that growth is occurring and being very accurate about what zone, subzone and level so that we can project where we'll need schools and make sure that we have property in those areas, especially when the market is good, when it's a buyer's market. So, we're going to keep in tune with that. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn to close it out and some next steps.
So our next steps will be seeking one or more real estate brokers or individuals to provide services for selling, exchanging, and acquiring sites for future schools. We're currently working with procurement to set this up. We're about finished with it, but we are working with procurement on that. We'll be proactive with properties either that we currently have in our inventory with permitting properties, meaning Army Corps Water Management. As you know, going through the process with the past two properties, that prolongs the timeframe to begin construction to build the school. So it could take anywhere from six months to 24 months. So we want to be proactive, get the sites that we have, we have a projected need within the next five years, go ahead and start the permitting process, and get that piece out of the way so they can build the school in the timeframe that they need. The primary directive is to sell, exchange, or acquire specific property that will benefit the district in the future. What we are recommending too, that any proceeds from the sale of property be earmarked for the purchase of property where it's needed. That's very important. We want to continue, you know, it was, as Mr. Toibert said, we purchased quite a few properties during the height of the market, but we need to be mindful in the future that even though we may sell a property for less than what we purchased for, and we really don't want the market to go to that extent, because you see what happens when that happens or when that, when the market does go up. So we, we need to look at properties. We may sell it for a little less, but it'll benefit us in the long run because we'll get property... because we'll get properties that are more conducive in areas more populated. It will help with transportation costs by reducing the amount of buses, potentially eliminating buses, because there'll be properties hopefully within the proximity of students within two miles. So we just need to keep that in mind when we bring contracts to you and somebody says, well, what did that purchase, what was that purchased for? And so.
If there's any questions?
Just going back to Astero for a second, the 10-acre plot that you're talking about selling, that's the one that's right next to Astero High School?
That's the one on Block Lane.
Where is that? I can't see it on the map.
Other side.
That is, you know where Astero High School is. So there's the Parks and Recreation Center in Astero.
Yeah.
It's basically between the school, and it's actually not really, it's not within their park, but the park kind of goes around that property. So it will benefit the park in the long run, and Lee County owns that park, even though it's in the Village of Astero.
And the great thing about working with the county is the interlocal agreement that we have in place. So if they develop that as part of their park, it actually extends the school's use of the property if they develop it into fields, baseball fields, soccer. So it's.
How, I'm sorry to interrupt you, how close are we to completing this?
We're in the beginning stages of it, so you'll obviously see that as it comes forward. And we can, if you want to have further conversations, by all means, we can.
I'd really like to do that, please, and thank you.
Other comments, questions?
So where I have lived, and I've said this in public a number of times, builders don't get permission to build until they set aside land for public use, firehouses, libraries, green space and schools. We don't do that in Lee County. Instead, we're supposed to have impact fees to pay for growth, right, which we don't have. Do we have, is there any group in the county that's looking five to 10 to 15 years out, which is what you're, what you're projecting in terms of land use? Is there any thought being given to everybody sitting down and talking about how we're going to, how we're going to create land for schools as opposed to the district buying it? I mean, everybody says they don't want the builders, they don't want to pay impact fees. But in many places, the builders are required to set land aside, which is a cost to them. But we don't do that here either. I just wonder if people are feeling enough pressure at this point to actually sit down and have the municipalities talk to the districts. The other question I have is multiple use. It was very distressful to me when, well, I shouldn't say distressful. I didn't understand why Benita needed to build a new library at the same time we were talking about needing land for a school, and we weren't talking together about using land for a library and school. And I realize now in retrospect, that wouldn't have worked. But one of the things they talk about over this MMM is multiple use of that land. And we get to the point where we're one year, two years or three years away from needing this land, and we haven't had the conversation with the public entities that we need to have. It just seems to me, particularly with the county commission now just sort of saying, well, now you have a piece of property that was zoned for 450 houses, and now you can put 1,200 on it because they're mitigating the wetland. I mean, it just seems to me that we need to be doing some planning with the county commission, because they're having an impact on us. So, I mean, I'm.
Your point is well taken, Ms. Morgan. And to that end, I know that we've started to work with the Village of Astero on their comprehensive plan, and that's really where that work needs to start. So we're very fortunate to be working with Mr. Sarkozy on that particular piece. Now, we do have an interlocal agreement that's in place right now for concurrency. Unfortunately, it's not written very favorably for the school district. It's not, has not much teeth, as I like to say it. If we show that we have capacity somewhere in the district, it doesn't matter where we're building, then concurrency really doesn't have the bite it needs. So let's take, for instance, we're growing crazily in the east, and a developer puts in a 500 single-family development in. They can point to the fact that we have capacity in the west zone, and they would not need to, in that concurrency agreement, set aside property for a school. But I believe it is probably our role as a school district to approach these municipalities, as well as the county commission, and work collaboratively with them in regards to our needs, you know, beyond what we already have for property. What our needs, we are required to share our projections with them. Our five-year work plan is shared with them, so they are aware of our growth and where it's occurring. But some more articulation between our planning department and the planning departments in the municipalities will certainly work.
Well, and toward that end, I mean, you know, Mr. Mora and Dr. Desmores and I met with the county two weeks ago, with Roger Dejarle and his staff. And the point of that was to try to work on a way to where the county and the school district could come together collaboratively and work toward some common issues in financing and school financing in particular. And one of the things that had been suggested even in an earlier meeting with one of the county commissioners, Commissioner Kiker, was that we formulate a joint committee to, toward that very end. So our next action for that is to try to work with Roger Dejarle and his staff to put that committee together. Because one of the things that had been suggested was that, you know, when you do have a major development goes in in a certain area, there are certain things that are assessed. They, the county currently has one, I can't recall what the name of that quote fee was, but it does have an impact on the educational environment as well. And that's what, you know, our traditional impact fees were. But they also had indicated a willingness to look at what are our school needs or the district needs and work with us to help us in our funding efforts with our capital needs. So Mark and I and Dr. Desmores, you know, next action as I see it is to work with Roger Dejarle to try to put that committee together. Now, he felt he needed to get permission from his board to do that. And I just assume I already have that permission from this one.
Ms. LaRiviere, and then Ms. Patrick, and then Mr. Toyber.
After reading today's news press with the development that's going on at Corks Group and seeing projected development to the south of State Road 82 in the east zone, I look at this big blank space where we have no acreage and where the county commission is starting to allow more development. I believe now is the time for us to look at this, because I see this area as being a very marketable place where we will see a lot of people selecting to be there. Many of those from the east coast who want to live here and still work over on the east coast. So based on what I'm seeing out in the east area where I am, I see some overlapping between the east and the south. And so if there's any way we can work with some of these developers and with our county commission to do some projection, because everybody needs to start doing some planning for the next 10 to 15 years. It can't happen soon enough.
Ms. Patrick?
And that ties nicely into my comment, which I know that we need to talk about this after we're done with the budget, but us as a board, changing our policy to include a five, seven, 10-year long-term strategic plan. I think a lot of what you talked about, Kathleen, could be addressed. Instead of being reactive, we can be proactive with a long-term strategic plan. So I'm going to gently remind us of that when we get back after our hiatus in July.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber.
And I don't understand the next steps, where the staff will be seeking one or more real estate brokerage firms or individuals to provide a service for selling. I don't get it. I just don't get it why we, you know, we are the largest entity in the county. First off, for selling, if you go over it, looking at the 10-acre, I think that's something in the 10-acre in the, in the, in the south zone. The Astero one, again, we're doing that as a cooperative, you know, government entity to entity. I don't think we need a third party to pay the money to.
No.
In the west zone, I believe the same thing for the 10-acre. Talk to the city of Cape Coral and work at entity to entity. The issue on the Tower Road one, we had talked to the county commission about them putting that into 2020 plan and maybe giving us a piece of property in where Ms. LaRiviera said there's a, a spot. And again, I think that's more entity to entity. So and the few that to sale, my point is, is that when we start saying we have a need, we're this big white elephant, we don't hide. It's not like Disney can come up from underground and say, we're going to buy land. They all know that. Let the, the selling brokers come to the district, come to our people with all the packages and we review. I don't know why we should be incurring a 3% cost on a huge parcel of land for doing the things, you know, we have in-house attorneys to look at contractual obligations. I guess I just need a little bit more explanation as why we need to hire somebody to do this exchange and acquiring of sites when we have, I mean, I believe we have the talent inside the house, and I believe a lot of the legwork can be done, and the people are in the commission on the selling side, to give us all that information, because they're making 3% on multimillion-dollar parcels. They have a lot of legwork they can do that we don't have to pay for.
I agree with that. Do you want, Dr. Atkins or Mr. Mora?
Well, I know the genesis of this idea was to have some consultative professional advice on how to manage this land, when it would be a good time to sell, maybe not to sell, give us some future forecasting for property, the market, how it is. So it's to provide that piece that we don't have in-house, that advice that we need in regards to managing the property. And I appreciate your comments, and I do believe that we have it in-house. A lot of the components we need to manage it properly, and a lot of it will come to market and it will happen itself. But I think there are some instances, and Don might be able to share a little bit more in regards to these services that we need. And it might not be brokerage, I know that it's on the PowerPoint there, but it's just advice. It's kind of like when, for instance, if you consult a Realtor in regards to buying property and whether or not it's a good decision, bad decision, just some additional independent insight on to what we do with our property.
And in reference to working with the municipalities on those properties, that would be excluded. We're not taking all of our vacant land and saying, here, what should we do with it? I mean, we'll get some advice, as Mr. Moore said, but any parcels that we are currently working with or plan to work with, or if a municipality approaches us, that it's a property that they are wished to acquire, then that's something we would work directly with them.
Ms. Morgan?
So along that line, and beyond what you're talking about with the sort of raising fees to pay for, to pay for costs, isn't there some way we can get the municipalities and the county to create an ad hoc body that basically sits down and does a five, 10 and 15-year plan amongst all three that says, you know, we need lib, when we build these thousands of units, we're going to need libraries, we're going to need hospitals, not hospitals, firehouses, we want to preserve green space, we need schools. Why can't we, as publicly elected groups, just create a 10 and 15-year plan that talks about these things?
We've actually begun conversations, as Dr. Atkins said, him and Mr. Mora have gone and spoke with them, but we as staff as well are starting to meet with them, as Mr. Moore said, we've met with the Village of Astero, Mr. Sarkozy, to begin those kind of conversations. Now, to have a set document and a formal document, that's a whole nother level, but we have to begin somewhere, of course. But we are, Mr. Blerton and I have gone to a couple of county meetings, which we'll be doing on a regular basis. It's a, it's a local planning group, and it's, you know, it's staff of Lee County and Incorporated Lee County, but we're doing it, as we said, with the Village of Astero. We set up a meeting, we've met with Cape Coral to do exactly that. So and within Cape Coral, there's a couple of parcels. Most parcels, we don't have to rezone Cape Coral. There are a couple of parcels that we have to rezone, and we want to work with them to say, can we alleviate that? So just little, little pieces that add up. But part of that is planning, looking at sites, because the property at Mariner, that's exactly what was done. We had that very large parcel, and a piece was carved out for the library. Same with Lehi, same thing, they have the library there. So we do, and we do have, and I'm sure you know, we have Veterans Park that's a shared facility. So we do work with them on that, but we do want to more, work much more closely with these groups as well. So that's our objective, to be proactive.
And to your point, Ms. Morgan, I know you were involved in so was planning at some point and meeting with the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, and that was kind of their charge to look over the whole comprehensive plan for Lee County. And as you know, if you follow on the news, a lot of municipalities are exiting that regional planning council. And that's really where that work, if we as a body want to move forward and lead this, it has to come together on the municipal level as well as the county level. And I'm not sure what's taken the place of the Southwest Florida Planning Council, but something like that needs to be stood up, and we have to have a seat at the table.
Right. Ms. Jevon Nelly?
And I couldn't agree more with that. In fact, I was, I've been thinking, like, back to, like, River Hall. Why can't we work with developers when they're developing a large community to, I love the neighborhood schools and people, that's what everybody wants. And so if we get with the developer and work with them, they all have the land, we'll work with them collectively and collaboratively, and just like with the municipalities. The infrastructure in Lee County is just horrible, I'm sorry, but you can't get anywhere because the roads are clogged and no one's thinking the five, 10, 20-year plan. And if we had more, work with the developers, they want to develop their land and we want to build schools. So work with them and build them in their development. I think if we, Hawthorne would have probably liked it if it was in their, part of their plan. They would have bought into it when they're buying their homes. And it's the whole selling process of your community, neighborhood schools and world-class education. That's just my thought on it, so.
Some communities do require that. We don't, so it's up to the developer in terms of how they utilize that land. I mean, in the past, I know we've had discussions with developers, but it's strictly voluntary whether they set some aside for the school or they use that land to build more of whatever their housing.
Right, but if in the planning stages, when they're going for developing, that would be part of the plan. And so it works with the whole community. I mean, everybody then buys in on it and they know what's going to happen. They're going to have a new school and a new community. Hey, that sounds great to me. I mean, you know, so.
Ms. LaRiviere?
I guess maybe it's a matter of us just being proactive and courting the developers, where we see that we could really benefit having some property on that site. Not every development would be conducive for that and would meet our needs, but let's look for areas that meet our needs and go to those developers.
Or maybe working with our incorporated areas and our county commission to see if that could be required.
Right, that's what I mean, exactly.
I would like to add a couple of things. First of all, it's in our decision about what we keep and what we don't keep, Mr. Toyber and I have seen huge population fluctuations during the time that, from 2000, when I was on the board, nothing was growing in the south and everything was growing in the west. And now it's the east, not so much the west and the south. So I think we have to be cautious when we talk about selling anything, because that's hard to predict. It just seems to take on a life of itself. And the other point that I wanted to make was, it was standard, and I think this came from the county, that whenever we built an elementary school, we did it in collaboration with the rec departments. Because if you, and you have been out to our elementary schools, you'll know there's often property that we own the soccer field and they maintain it or vice versa. We usually did not start an elementary school until we had talked to the appropriate rec departments to see if we could share facilities. I think Lexington Middle School is a prime example of that. They even have a facility there. So it's a, it's a very complex process. And, but you certainly have your arms around it and it's to the degree that you can at this point in time. Is there any direction that we, we want to give right now, Dr. Atkins? Are you looking for anything, or is this just to inform us so that when new things come up, we, we have the background information?
Well, initially, this was to provide you with some background information, but I think I'm hearing from the discussion in terms of what I deem as our next actions would be to move forward with setting up some type of collaborative committee with our county and our local municipalities to explore opportunities regarding joint use, but also to address some of the district's growth needs as well as our capital needs. And then with the, I think the expressed goal of putting together a five to 10-year long-range plan of how we might work better collaboratively together. So if that works for you all, we will go ahead and start to move, we'll make those connections and see if we can get something rolling. As I did, say earlier, we did have some preliminary discussions with some of these folks, and we had indicated we'd move in that direction, but I think I we had indicated we'd move in that direction, but I, I think I see a, a stronger, um, desire on the part of the board to, uh, get moving with that. So if that sounds good to you, then that's the direction we'll move in.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes, Dr. Cuckle, just in, in terms of the issue with respect to donation of properties by developers, that, that's a function of the development order. So it's a function of the, uh, of the zoning authority, of the county, the municipalities that are issuing those development orders. Uh, when a development creates the need for new student stations, the developing, the, the zoning authority can require mitigation as a condition of that development order. Uh, and we did see that, uh, some in the past. Uh, it, it's been a number of years, generally since the impact fee came into place, uh, we've not seen those type of conditions in the development orders, partly because the impact fee is there to accomplish the same purpose, to pay the cost of those new student stations required as a result of that new development. Certainly, there is legal authority there to impose that requirement as part of a development order.
We're all going.
Thank you.
Neither, so what's going on?
Exactly.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Anything else on your end?
Oh, just thank you for your time and the input, we very much appreciate it.
And we thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, board members will now move to public comment. Is there anybody on the right side of the seating section out here that would like to speak under public comment? Anybody on the left side? If not, we shall move to fourth. Oh, Mark. Come right on down.
Good afternoon, thank you, sorry I was late, uh, stuck out for a second. Uh, Mark Castellano, President of the Teachers Association of Lee County. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, board members. I, I noticed in the presentation about the budget, there was a line in there about, um, negotiations must be completed, whatever. Um, we've not started those conversations, we have agreed to wait until August, obviously, before we even start, just to make, give everybody time to breathe and figure out what the impacts of 7069 are gonna be, et cetera. Um, I'm gonna be talking about this a lot over the next few months because there are certain things that, um, are called for in 7069 that are gonna be extremely problematic and we're gonna have to get on the same page about those things. Dr. Atkins and I have not really had a chance to talk about that yet, 'cause the bill wasn't even signed last time we met, so, um, there's gonna be some very intense conversations around that. Um, that legislation, in my opinion, is unconstitutional in that it infringes, um, upon our collective bargaining authority, um, the district's and ours. So it's gonna be some ve, very heavy-duty conversations with some of the, uh, things that they put into that bill. And I just wanna give everybody a heads up, it may be a bumpy ride. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Last chance. Okay, we shall move to board member comments and let's start with Ms. Morgan.
Okay, so, uh, Dr. Atkins, you sent around a link to the Fox News report on the community camp, Save Our Students at Dunbar Community. I happened to be there this morning at 11:00 a.m. for a tour. I, I, the kids were terrific. I, one child was talking about why he was there, what he planned to do, what his goals, I got goosebumps just listening to the child talk. Um, they have clearly got a good program. I mean, it's a pilot, it's their first year, um, a good program in place. We've invested in it, I think, given the fact that they're collecting data, front-end and back-end, we'll have a pretty good idea of what that investment means. Um, but also the fact that the city has, has partnered with them to provide internship and job-type opportunities. So I just, I wanted to say, I just so happened to be there this morning and to get a chance to see it, and I was just really impressed and pleased that the district is, is investing in opportunities like that and other parts of the community are doing it at the same time. Um, the only other comment I wanna make is that our consortium meeting, uh, our consortium consultant, uh, Tom Sarah, addressed the whole consortium thanking Patty Elkin and Richard Itzen for their work on the accountability piece that was developed when we had our consortium meeting here, uh, in September, because essentially, what was in the, um, the Restore Smart Accountability piece of the consortium agenda, a lot of that was adopted in 7069. At least the accountability part was goo-
The highlights.
The, the, yeah, right, the high, the high notes, yes. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to pass that compliment on to our staff, who I, I think, I know Tom was very appreciative at the time and really glad that they were able to help him out when we were doing that work, so thank you.
Ms. LaRivier?
Let's see, I, I have to do some backtrack as I was not able to be here at the last, um, meeting, but, um, kudos to the Uncommon Friends Foundation and their sponsorship of the Ethics Chair at, um, FGCU. Dr. Eric Dent had their first business ethics invitational, where students were divided into groups, they were given a business scenario that was, someone had to decide the most ethical way, the charac, the main character had to do, solve the scenario the most ethical way possible and to see what these, how these students would work, do their research in a very short amount of time, short amount of time of even giving the scenario and, uh, worked towards that end. It was amazing and also to see students, many were part of the advisory committee for, uh, Fort Myers, uh, City Council. And so we had several from there, several from, um, Dunbar High, several from South. Next year, I'm encouraging that we get our own student advisory involved, students, because we have, it's an, it's an important piece for our students to get, and not only to come in and do that, but to see how we are slowly, um, incorporating more of the ethics education within our schools. How critical it is. As you know, we have a problem within our society with ethics and, uh, very powerful piece. So the kids were amazing and staff members, uh, Dr. Karen Sorrell participated with that as well as I, and, uh, she was an advisor, I served as a judge, and it was a great opportunity. Um, I had the pleasure of going to the, um, on June the ninth, attending the, um, presentations by the collegium members in the afternoon where they shared all of the components that they learned. And, um, very thrilled to see that now principals are invited to be part of that collegium training. Our own Dr. Cindy McClung was part of that, as well as Dr. Butts from Mariner High, we had several, uh, Rob Cooper, um, Lori Vasquez, we had several staff members who came in for a day or a section and participated in that training. And, um, so it was exciting to see the excitement of their, um, teachers and the creativity they put into their presentations and thank the Lord, it's no longer how it was when I went to collegium. So it is much better and more positive for them as well. It's shared with an experience, we, I sir, I have a partnership, he's with Valerie's House and in meeting with Angela Melvin, one of our student, members of our student advisory committee who lost a father and, um, they lost one car in this accident and then there was another accident and they had no vehicle. And I had shared that situation with Angela Melvin and she mentioned it to someone who, and there was this woman who just happened to be there and lo and behold, the family now has basically a brand-new, it's not new, it's 2004, a Toyota Avalon with very few miles that is all spiffied up and we've been able to partner with other, just another example of how we can partner with other organizations to make a difference in our students' lives. If you are so interested, uh, the Southwest Florida Regional Human Trafficking Coalition is seeking, seeking community members that would like to receive training regarding what to look for and how to identify people who may be subject to human trafficking. Um, they are looking for this to not only be able to get you get the training, but so that you have the capacity to train people that you interact with and network with. So, um, if people are interested in getting involved, I will gladly share the information. And Patty had left, I was going to share being able to be here for her retirement celebration on the 13th. And I only know of one other person and, right now, in our district and I, Dr. Atkins, you may know of more, but, um, Patty began as a paraprofessional on the buses and were, and has served in, and, you know, talk about having a major impact. And wherever she went, she was always baking. So of course, at her retirement, it was all baked goods. And, um, I walked in and I felt like I was in the old Mason's Bakery that we used to have downtown and, um, it was such a gracious time to hear all the wonderful things about Patty and the impact she has made, from personal interaction with our students, um, to myself when I was a secondary reading coach and working and collaborating with her, even with staff development with some trainings years ago. And, uh, greatly, she too will be greatly missed and I know of only one other person who's now an AP, who has started out as a bus driver and went through school and is now, um, an AP in the district. So I find what we do here in Lee County Schools absolutely amazing.
Thank you. Mr. Toyber?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I, I wanted to just give, uh, accolades out to the presentation we had on our, on our property and I wanted to say that, you know, we do have amazing talent in all of our departments and, and I was so pleased at this last FSBA that we returned back to the, to the format that we had, um, years ago when, you know, we had, uh, last week, I believe it was last week, but our last FSBA, um, probably thirty percent of our, of the presentations to sixty-seven school districts came from our district. Mr. Moore gave a fantastic presentation, Dr. Pruitt, and it just shows, you know, it, the, the, the advances we have in our Castle software, we had just been recommended by people from the DOE when they saw what we do here locally, not with canned programs that we're buying from third-party vendors, and that was where I got my hackles up. It's like, you know, we immediately go to people thinking that they're, you know, they come out with these software programs and these, and these, uh, uh, idea of the day and we, everybody, we spend all this money about it because they're supposed to be the professionals and the authorities, when in fact, if you take a look at all these programs that we've bought, have just come and gone, come and gone, but the, the, the base programs that we've done here and this Castle program's a greater, uh, re, uh, idea, or the, the things that Dr. Pruitt's doing in, in HR, the things that we're doing in ELL, ESC, all of these type of programs, um, it's great. And for us to be able to show them to the state, you know, the motto we used to use was steal shamelessly. We would go look, you know, Dr. Cavalla down in Miami does some great things and I know Dr. Atkins keeps an eye open and he sees things that he's doing well and we, we figure out how we can tailor it for Lee County. So that's really great and I just want people to realize the talents that we have and it was refreshing and I wanna thank again the, our participants up there FSBA. We also recently had, uh, at the state level, there's two awards yearly, there's award for the best, for the principal of the year from the DOE and the assistant principal. And again, out of sixty-seven counties, Kelly Stedman from James Stevens International Academy, our, one of our DA schools, was, was awarded the assistant principal of the year by the Department of DOE. That's just one example that continues to shine for our people in Lee County and I'm just really proud of this district and I wish more people would get to hear all the accolades and all the profession, proficiency and expertise we have in this county. That's all I have.
Ms. Patricka?
So I went to my first Florida High School Athletic Association Board of Directors meeting and I'm going to sit on that board for three years and I think it will be more fun than any board member should be allowed to have, sitting on any board in the state of Florida. I thank you very much for supporting me and doing that. It really is gonna be a lot of fun. Um, Herschel Lyons, the Chancellor of K-12 Education for the State of Florida, also sits on that board and I didn't know who he was or what his position was. Um, we were sitting at dinner talking and he asked me where I was from and I told him Lee and he said, "Oh, that's, that's Greg Atkins." I said, "Yes." He said that, he's a, he didn't use the word agent, but he said, um, "He's bringing transformational change to Lee County." So your reputation precedes you statewide. Um, the other thing that impressed me too was at the collegium, is that what we call that thing? Um, the dinner, and I ask people, "Does this typically happen every year?" In the speeches that the teachers were giving, they were praising Dr. Atkins and that is not something apparently that happens every year. So not only are you being recognized across the state, but within the district, you're being recognized for what you're doing for this district. So thank you for that. Um, to piggyback on what, uh, Mr. Toyber said, is your name Shelley in the back in the green? Excellent. Um, I went to your presentation with, with, uh, Dr. Pruitt and I was really, really impressed to see your use of data in human resources. And it's very unusual for, uh, human resource departments to do what you do because not enough of them rely on data. So it's not just a matter of, um, training on how to feel good or have a happy workplace, but it's actually using data to drive the decisions in the direction of your department. So I was really impressed with what you're doing and how you're moving us forward. And that is my report.
Thank you. Ms. Jevon Nelly?
I just enjoyed that, the collegium dinner and the whole, I had no idea what I was going to, so that was pretty exciting and I knew it was the Golden Apple winners and I knew about them, but I didn't know the, everything behind it, so I, that was really wonderful. So I just enjoyed that, Ms. Lee, I'm still learning, so that's where I'm at.
Ms. Fisher, thank you.
Hey, very briefly, um, I think that, um, this board made a very good choice when we hired Dr. Atkins. Not only is he an excellent leader, but a change agent. And, and like you said, the reputation is really spreading out there. Um, also, I think that Dr. Atkins' staff has had an opportunity to show their gifts and talents and I know that in-house, we have a lot of expertise and, um, a lot of competence and confidence and I thank you for giving people an opportunity to show that. That's important. As we wish our retirees, Godspeed and, and happy new, um, experiences. We wanna welcome our new hires and have all of our staff appre, know that we appreciate all that you do and have a very, um, safe and healthy break if you're taking one, 'cause I know some of us are. And it's an honor to serve, as usual, and I look forward to the next school year.
Thank you. Ms. Patricka has one more thing.
I forgot. Welcome, Mary.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Um, you've already anticipated needs, I didn't know that I had and I think we've worked together for thirty minutes, so I'm really excited that you're here. You know I love you. Our work together on DAC was awesome and I'm happy you're here.
And because of Mary, I have a pair of glasses to wear tonight. So I really appreciate her. Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I do have a school law minute and continuing with, um, parliamentary procedure, today we wanna discuss changing previous action of the school board. So the factual situation we're dealing with is you've received a superintendent's recommendation, there's been a motion to second, the board has voted, the action passed, so you have a motion that has passed, now you wish to change that action. If you wanna do it on the same day, the vehicle to accomplish that is the motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider can only be made by the member who voted on the prevailing side of the action to be reconsidered. So if the motion was to adopt the superintendent's recommendation to approve a job description and the vote was six to one in favor of doing so, uh, the one cannot vote, cannot make the motion to reconsider, uh, one of the six can make such a motion. A motion to reconsider requires a second and a majority vote, it cannot be made twice in the same day, only once. A motion to reconsider is debatable if the motion to be reconsidered is debatable. The effect of the adoptive, adoption of a motion to reconsider is not to negate the previous action, it is rather to return the action to the point of the vote. Then you must again vote on the motion now being reconsidered. So, uh, for example, if the motion to reconsider passes, the chair would then state, "The question now before the board is the motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation, uh, to approve that job description. The motion was made by blank, it was seconded by blank, now is there any discussion? After that, the discussion, then you would have a vote." If the motion to reconsider fails, the previous action of the board stands. So that the, the chair would state, "The motion to reconsider fails, therefore the original decision of the motion stands." That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Dr. Atkins?
Uh, just a couple of real quick items. Uh, we had talked a little bit, some questions came up regarding, um, regarding LED lighting and, and I had mentioned, uh, the fact that we had put an RFP out related to energy and the staff was able to get me some information, which I'll provide at this time. Uh, we did, uh, they did, um, indicate that Naresco was the, uh, number one, um, vendor and they're working- And they're working, will be working in the month of August to actually negotiate a plan with Naresco. And again, that's kind of a two-pronged approach. One is behavior, and the second has to do with equipment and so forth. Relative to some things going on right now with LED lighting, I know that Benita Springs High School, they are using LED lighting, and then also looking to upgrade throughout the district when funding will become available. And I'm sure Naresco will be one of those, one of the ones making recommendations relative to LED. They currently are piggingbacking with Clay County bid on an RFP that went to the board in January regarding LED lighting, and Musco's doing the work. We currently have a LED exterior light update also scheduled for Fort Myers Technical College. So that's just some preliminary data, and we'll just keep you posted. I'm anxious to see what comes out of, out of this energy contract. We, the team has made pretty good progress over the course of the last five years in the energy reductions. However, you know, we still look at where we are comparatively to the state, and we have some, we still have some ways to go, ways to go. So I think that this consultant will help us get down below the state average and beyond. The other, the only other thing, I do appreciate the comments, but particularly the recommendation, or the notice that this is a team effort. Shelley, by the way, is a, she is a black belt, which is a part of our quality training, and working with Cindy on that, so, which as you saw, Cindy's worked out at the collegium. And Cindy is working real hard to, to help me with merging some of the efforts that are going on across the district between the schools and the CSI that you've, you've heard about for a number of years, and also what we have going on in the district effort. And that, that is, that's a pretty large project, I think, bringing the two together, because we've never had that, those two efforts. I think there's been some attempts, but we're going to be successful this time. And the black belt training and some of the other Six Sigma training, a lot of the folks out here in the audience today, a lot of the folks that are directors and executive directors are now at least yellow belt trained, and many of them are green belt trained, and they have some green belt projects, which I think is going to reap us some huge rewards in the upcoming year. So that's it for my comments.
Thank you. Board member, anything for the good of the order? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.